It's been helping since I've been here for almost four years. Our staff takes care of so much for us to do, and I'll just say one little thing. So every day up here, every commission meeting, they give us a lifesaver. And she always gives me one that is sugar-free. I'm diabetic. So she has, since I've sat here in this seat, every time, there's always been a sugar-free, some little, something to sweeten us up a little bit. I guess that's why I'm not sweet, because there's no sugar in it. And if there was, maybe I'd be sweeter. But anyway, thank our staff for that. They remember the little things and the little details in life, and I appreciate that. And that brings us to Stephanie Tatten. Stephanie, come on up. Or Sergeant Tatten, I guess. I should be a little more politically correct. Come on up to the microphone there for a minute. I'm going to read something about her. I've known Stephanie, as a lot of people in the audience have, for a long time. And she has done some amazing things over at our Child Center with domestic violence conferences and different things like that. And I'm going to read this, this little paragraph about Stephanie. "The following nomination letter was written by Laine Finley, Lieutenant in the Weber County Sheriff's Office." And Laine's here, and we appreciate that. Laine. "Snowbird, on Tuesday, June 9th, 2015, at the Utah Children's Justice Symposium, Utah Prosecution Council Domestic Violence Conference, Detective Stephanie Tatten received the 2015 Utah Children's Justice Center Program Multidisciplinary Team Award. Each year, this honor is bestowed upon one of Utah's child abuse professionals who demonstrate tremendous commitment and courage as they work in the trenches of child abuse investigation and prosecutions. They are truly the unsung heroes in Utah's fight to protect its children." This prestigious acknowledges the dedication it takes to be an effective member of the Children's Justice Multidisciplinary Team. Detective Tatten, who was recently promoted to Sergeant, has served the past eight years as an investigator, signed to work cases involving crimes against children. Her unwavering commitment and professionalism has made a tremendous difference in the lives of many of the children and families she has come in contact with. Although Sergeant Tatten has been reassigned as a patrol supervisor, she continues to be a strong advocate for child abuse victims throughout her involvement with the Children's Justice Center in Ogden. Outside her regular duty, she volunteers many hours at the CJC, assisting with child abuse investigation and organizing charitable events. At recent fundraiser called Starry Nights, Sergeant Tatten was instrumental in helping the CJC raise over 13,000 in cash donations for drug testing for children who are in danger. She has also helped organize asylum auctions, which helped raise thousands of dollars more for the center. In addition to the countless hours of volunteer work at the CJC event, she personally sponsored a table at the gala for all of the members of her patrol crew to be able to be in attendance. Sergeant Tatten's passion and commitment to public services, particular in the children of abuse, goes above and beyond her duty." So Stephanie, and I've known her for a long time. She has made this part of her heart and soul. So the CJC, our center, not only did she work for the county there, but then she donated thousands of hours. I know that because I had worked at the sheriff's office, and after I left and became a commissioner, she was putting together these events and that. And so we'd like to give her a round of applause. Stephanie? Stephanie, would you like to say a few words? And then Sheriff, would you like to come up and say something? Come on up, Sheriff. We'll hear from you first, Stephanie. You got about 45 minutes, so go ahead and take all you would like.
Um, I don't know what to say, other than I really appreciate the honor. And it doesn't seem like work when it's something that you love so much. But, thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, stay right there. We've got something we're going to come and present you.
Right here. Uh, there's a lot that could be said, and I could take your whole 45 minutes.
Thank you. Oh, I know you could. Never mind. We'll take in the 45.
I won't, though. Uh, I will say this. Uh, you know, you look at the folks that are here supporting Steph, and there's a reason for that, because we love her. You know, uh, our staff here just love her. She's tremendous. You know, when we looked at putting Steph into this position with the CJC, there had been a break for a number of years, probably five or six years, that child endangered detective at CJC. And Rod Layton and I, I don't know if Rod made it, did he, Roberta?
He's here.
There he is. Rod, come up here for a minute, would you?
Don't let him talk.
Yeah, don't worry. Rod and I had discussed this for some time, because we knew the need was there. And it was, uh, um, difficult for both of us to know that that need wasn't being met. And so we'd had this conversation for some time on how we've, and how we fill that position. And it just took a little bit of time for us to kind of roll into some resources to be able to, to make some arrangements to get someone there. And then, uh, as we did that, and, and we looked at who would fill that position, and Rod and the CJC staff were part of that, and, and Sergeant Tatten chose to go there. Steph, uh, I, I think I speak for, for all of us when I tell you that we've just never been prouder. There was a little bit of, 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 a little bit of kickback in that when you look at what was currently happening, we didn't have a lot of resources in our, in our narcotics unit. And so we were in need of operators and, and agents. And so there was a little bit of, of friction in making this happen, because they needed those things, too. In the end, we felt like, uh, we just needed to take care of those kids, and we hadn't been to the degree that, that we were certainly comfortable or happy with. And I think all of those folks involved in that process, all around now today, would tell you they were so, so glad, uh, that we, uh, we put Steph in that position, because when you get to know her, you find out that she is non-stop, 100%, 110% and 24/7. And to the point that she's one of those that you just kind of got to try to rein in a little bit, because she's out there all day and night, anytime she's called, anytime she's asked for, anything she's asked to do, and can, and can never say no. And it's great, uh, from the sense that she accomplishes so much, and is there, uh, at every level to help everyone out there. And I know if we were to let some of these guys back here, and some of these gals back here come up and speak, they could talk to you for some time about all the different levels of assistance she gave them on, in so many different ways. So I just want to finish up. I'll give Rod here just a minute to speak from the perspective of the CJC. I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate her dedication and her commitment, because Steph truly sets a high bar for all of us. And when it comes to, you know, the brotherhood and the sisterhood and the family of law enforcement and getting things done, she is truly, uh, she's truly dedicated and committed, and truly a close member of that family. And we are so appreciative to her. And the comfort, and I know this from a personal level, the, the comfort and peace and justice that she was helped to find and bring for so many children in our community is priceless.
Thank you, Sheriff.
It just can't be replaced. So I personally want to thank Steph for all that she's done for this entire community, the sheriff's office, law enforcement in general, and certainly the children in our community. She's just been tremendous. I won't go on all day, because she doesn't want me to. Uh, she would never stand up here and tell you this. To her, it's just doing her job. But she has gone so, so far above and beyond. And I want to give Rod an opportunity to address you as well, because she worked directly for Rod there at the CJC and under his direction, and the sheriff's office. And she's truly one of those that can serve both and do it well.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Um, yeah, I totally agree with everything the sheriff said. One of the things with DEC or drug-endangered children, that's really kind of unique to Weber County. It, it really is interesting to me that it isn't more widespread across the state. Uh, but we are really the only center in the state that really focuses hardcore on drug-endangered children, who are the most at-risk kids in any community. Uh, but for some reason, other centers and other communities just haven't, they just haven't jumped on that wagon. And I think one of the reasons is, um, that they didn't have anybody to take it like we, like we did. And Steph jumped all over that, and she, she had relationships with, with everybody, and she had to build those over years. Uh, the Strike Force is an interesting group to work with sometimes. Uh, you know, a lot of their information obviously has to be very confidential and secure in what they do, and so they're not really very often willing to share that. And so when Steph stepped in there, they felt confident that they could do that, which is one of the reasons she was so successful with that. Uh, but it didn't happen right off. She had to step in and do that. But DEC is a very, very small part of actually what she did. Uh, and over the years of, as I've watched this, and I've been involved since at least '92 with the Children's Justice Center before I was director, and it is extremely rare to find a Steph Tatten. I mean, I've seen them over the years, come and go, come and go, and once in a while, you'll get somebody that's actually pretty good at it, but they last about two years, and they throw up their hands and say, "I am done with this. You know, I just, I, I don't want to, I don't want to do this anymore. I, you know, I, I want to..." An experience I had, and I won't say the deputy that, that come and did this, but some may figure it out. But he was a, you know, he's a, he's a great guy, and he was a, you know, he was the guy you wanted there as backup, and, and, um, just a, just a hardcore... And he, uh, he came up to the center one day and said, "Hey, I've got to interview this kid." And I'm like, "Well, you haven't ever done that before." He says, "Well, I've been in law enforcement for 25 years. I think I can interview a five-year-old." And I said, "Well, how about we do this? You go in and, and interview this five-year-old, and I will go with you, and I will just sit there and, and let you do your thing." And so this big guy goes in there, he sits in the chair, and he starts to interview this little five- or six-year-old, I can't remember, little girl. And about halfway through it, she just bursts into tears, and she starts to rub her eyes, and she said, "You know, why would my dad do this to me if he loved me?" And I'm just, I'm so used to hearing that kind of stuff, that I just sit there, and I didn't hear anything else. And I looked over and hear tears running down this officer's eyes, and I'm like, "Okay, continue on with the questions," because we try, we, we give them a second to recover, and then we go right back in. We, we try not to turn them into victims if they can get past that a little bit. And so finally, I could see that that was not going to happen, and I took over and started to ask some of the questions, till he recovered a little bit. And then when we walked out, he said, "I will never, ever do that again. Never will I be up here and do that again." And so, you know, Steph went in there hundreds and hundreds of times and heard those stories, and, and, and you have to go home at the end of the day. You just have to do that. But it's extremely rare to find somebody like Steph Tatten that has the, the passion, the drive, and you have to really care about what you're doing. Child abuse cases are not burglaries. They're not thefts. They're, they're different in that you focus on the victim. You don't focus on a suspect so much. And law enforcement struggles with that. They, they want to, you know, they want to be a cop. They want to go out and make that arrest. And so it's, uh, you have to switch hats a little bit, and then you've got to deal with the families. And we deal with 600 kids at the CJC every year, but we deal with 3,000 people. So, and that's just the direct involvement. That doesn't count the 50 other people that every case, you know, has an influence on 50 other people about what we, we, we found in our research. But anyway, when Steph, when Steph was ready to be promoted, we had some serious talks. And she just said, "I can't go. I can't take the promotion." And I said, "Steph, you've got to take the promotion. It's time to move on. You know, you need to further your career." But she struggled and struggled and struggled with this, and I'm glad she did it. We miss her. We will probably never be able to replace her. But, um, there is a time when you need to move forward and move on, and, um, we're glad that she did that. So I'm so grateful for the time I had with her, and I hope that in the near future, we find another one like her. But, you know, I might, might be long gone before that happens, anyway. But, uh, I love her. She's, she's just an amazing, uh, you know, deputy and sergeant, so thank you for her service.
Thank you. We've got something for you. Stay right there. We want to take a picture real quick. You, Rod?
Sheriff, stay there. Sure.
Let's come on up in here, guys. Put Steph here in the row. Here's a gift or tip to give, Steph. Says it's from $25 to $500. I don't know how much it is from the county, so I would, you're just going to have to guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of great people at the sheriff's office. I see a lot of them here. It's nice to see you guys to come over occasionally and visit us. You're welcome to come over every Tuesday at 10:00. A lot of cool stuff happening here. I know they're busy, but they can come by and say hi.
No, I just want to be able to say one word before I move on to the next thing. It was kind of a difficult day yesterday. It was for me. Um, and I just want to say thank you. This is why he wasn't going to let me talk, because I'm such a doofus, but, um, thank you to this community that works so diligently to keep us safe and has to spend days like We may have lost somebody that was 100 miles away, or 50 miles away, or 10,000 miles away, but they're still part of this family. We feel it for them and for their families. So from the commission office, we just want to say thank you. We worry about you, think about you a lot. Keep working hard. Keep becoming the very best at whatever assignment it is that you have, like Sergeant Tatten, whether it's patrol interdiction, or SWAT, or investigations. There are people out there and people in here that love you and worry about you and appreciate everything that you do. They realize that there is a guardian at the gate. They understand it. They understand the difficulties of the job. We will back you. We will support you, and we appreciate you, and you don't feel like you're appreciated, especially when we get great opportunities to recognize you. We don't do it enough, and we understand that. But we think about you a lot, and we appreciate your leader. We appreciate a good man who fights for you every day. So from the commission office, good job. Keep it up.
Thank you. We're going to move along with our agenda. We're going to go to AF consent items. Number one, request for approval of warrants. Number two, request for approval of purchase, purchase orders in the amount of $22,134.97. Number three, request for approval of minutes of the meeting held on November 8th, 2016. Number four, request for approval of new business licenses. And number five, requests from the sheriff's office for approval to surplus three snowmobiles. Commissioner Ebert.
I don't have any questions.
Ricky.
Well, we had a really small amount of purchase orders, only 11 issued this week for $22,000 total. Forty-three percent of that, or $10,000, was for the library, um, and that was for a group-wise renewal. The rest of the purchase orders were spread out between the Health Department, Sheriff's Office, and Golden Spike. Uh, we issued, uh, 229 checks this week for $3.7 million. Twenty-nine percent of that, or $1 million, was for, uh, right-of-way acquisitions, almost exclusively on the 4000 South project, but some on Monroe Boulevard as well. Twenty-seven percent, or $999,000, was construction, mostly, uh, on 3500 West, and then some on 4000 South as well. Twelve percent, or $430,000, was for our transfer station, and that was primarily waste disposal. Eleven percent, or $385,000, was an escrow release for Summit Phase 1 and the Ridge Nest project. And then seven percent, or $255,000, was for the conference center for the boilers that, um, failed, um, a little while back. We had to replace those. That was $255,000.
Make a motion when you approve the consent items as read.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move on to number one, action items. Discussion or action on a resolution of County Commissioner Weaver County granting authority to the Weaver County Treasurer to adjust taxes, penalties, and interest under special circumstances. And we have our county treasurer, John Bond. It's all yours.
Thanks, commissioners. I appreciate your willingness to look at this, uh, option, uh, to address issues here in the, in our office and in other offices. And, uh, what we've got is, uh, over the years, we've, we've had practices that have developed, based on state law, statute, based on information communication we've had with different commissioners over time, as well as the attorney's office. And we thought that putting more formalized, uh, language to our practice made more sense long-term for us, for the commissioners, and for other offices. And so we've approached this, uh, all these different, uh, discussions over the last several years, and the practice that we, that we've developed into a resolution that you have in front of you. We've talked as county treasurers throughout the state of Utah in our meetings about formalizing these type of things. A couple of counties have, have done that. We want to also present to you an option to go ahead and, and explore this idea. And, uh, the, uh, the commissioners years ago set up a tax review committee, which is a recommending committee to you, the commissioners, when they, when the taxpayers have unique issues, and they want to bring them to you, uh, through this committee. So that committee sits. There are a myriad of small little events that happen, and what we've tried to do is take these small events, kind of put them and frame them into small cate, into categories, and present them in this resolution to kind of say, "Here are probably several items that instead of coming directly to the commissioners every day to solve an issue, or tax, putting through this tax review committee, uh, a myriad of, of events that we perhaps use the authority of the commission in our office to resolve many of these small events." And if you have any questions?
So, so let us, let the folks know out there what the small, what the biggest dollar amount that you guys can approve if they come and do the commission.
Uh, for example, if someone, uh, comes in with a $25 tax bill, and there's a $10 penalty on that, we would waive the $10 penalty if you agreed to that. So anything from $25 or under, uh, in taxes, would have a $10 penalty. We would look at that. So some farmers, for example, have 10 or 12 properties, and if, for a reason that you approved here in this ordinance, uh, we were to waive a $3 or, or, you know, if there was a bill for $2 or $3 for taxes, instead of charging them a $10 penalty, we, using your authority, would waive that. Otherwise, we'd come to you with all of these issues. And I think therein lies that balancing. Commissioners in the past have said, "We don't want to address these $10 penalty issues." Um, the, uh, so I think $10, or if there was interest accrued, um, for example, we got a check for, for a couple of thousand dollars, and, uh, it arrived, and it was missing one day of interest, a $1.12, or whatever. It could go up to, say it was a $50,000 check, and it was postmarked, and it came to us, and we posted it, and there was a $20 or $30 interest accrual for an extra day or two. That's the magnitude. So to your, to your point, how big? $10 to $30 to $40?
So what we did, I asked them to look into what it would, could cost the taxpayers in a year by doing this. We're talking a few hundred dollars. And this is going to take major amount of time and running stuff through the commission when we've got a treasurer that is capable of doing it. So I think it's a great, um, thing for Weber County, and I appreciate, John, you bringing that forward to us. Um, we wouldn't know that that's something that needs to happen, so... Commissioner Ebert.
I just think this is good governance. I think it makes sense. Sometimes we don't use common sense in government, and I appreciate that you have identified this and that you want to make it more formal, and doesn't, it puts you in a much better position as you move this forward. So I want to say thank you. I just want to touch base with legal. Mr. Wilson, do you see any issues or concerns with this?
We have addressed it already.
Okay.
Ron's very meticulous about giving everybody the file.
I just want everyone else to know that that's the process. We've had legal look at it also, so thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'll, I'll make a motion.
It's going to be a resolution. What's the number?
34.
34.
That we adopt Resolution 34.
I second that. Any more discussion? Seeing none, it's going to be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Bell?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't see Chris Alred here. You're going to deal with that, Dave?
I am. I'm the shorter version, better-looking version of Mr. Alred.
Thank you. Request for approval of memorandum of understanding by, between Weaver County and Ogden City Corporation to carry out purposes of the Strike Force under the Interlocal Cooperation Act. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, um, as you're aware, we recently lost a medium-experienced attorney, and we wanted to replace him. Our offices have become very young, as far as prosecutors go. And you're looking at me with some question?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm just saying we've got a young office there, and I, I believe it's fully reflected.
Mr. Alred has had some concern that on major cases, we need more experience, and in doing so, we looked at bringing in Mr. Smith, who used to work for us, who has been a justice court judge in Ogden City for some time. As you are aware, because you've had the discussions with Mr. Alred, that requires more additional money. And we did so. The commission granted us, or is intending apparently to grant us that in our budget. However, Ogden City approached Mr. Alred and wanted some enhanced enforcement of gang activity and drug activity, and asked if they, if we could get Mr. Smith to focus on that. He said, "Yes, but not if he has to do all the duties of the prosecutor he's replacing." Therefore, Mr. Alred worked it out with Ogden City and with the commission and budget folk to hire a newbie, if you will, plus bring in Mr. Smith, so he could focus on that. And Ogden City, in this agreement, is willing to fund the position for at least two years at $50,000 each year. Unless you have questions, I know you've discussed with Mr. Alred, I would request your approval of the memorandum of understanding.
So this discussion started, um, I don't know, five or six months ago, I think.
Yes, sir.
Um, and Mr. Alred had come to me and to visit with me on that, and I was 100% on board immediately. We need good, qualified prosecutors in our office, and our office here has got a bunch of great attorneys in it. Very good attorneys, but they're very young, very new. And, uh, Mr. Alred wanted to put together something to see if we could entice Mr. Smith to come back with our office, and...
Can I, can I just say, you keep saying Mr. Smith. That sounds like a character from The Matrix.
Okay.
It's Mr. D. Smith?
Mr. D. Smith, sorry. D. Smith.
D. Smith.
Who is a, I'm sorry, it's D. Smith who we're talking about. And so over time, we were able to work some stuff out, and we are, uh, and coming, having come from law enforcement, this is going to be a great thing for our county attorney's office. Um, he has got so much knowledge, and he is going to be a good man to have there. So we're really excited about that. We were glad we could put the finances together. That was our first stumbling block, and Ogden City, um, was very willing to step up and help us with it. And so we really appreciate that, and, uh, we've got a great team over there. Of course, Dave is one of our leaders over there, and such great experience, and we've got, these new attorneys are going to come along great. They just need some seasoning. They just need some experiences. So I am fully, um, on board with this, and let's see what Commissioner Ebert has to say.
Well, we've, we've definitely lost a lot of our experience when Mr. Daines passed away. We had Mr., uh, Mr. Hewer, who retired. We have some experienced attorneys that are getting ready to retire. Um, and so there is some, some critical mass as far as moving away, as far as our experience on, um, the criminal side. We have amazing civil attorneys. We have some new, young civil attorneys that, uh, I really am impressed by. But there is an issue right now on our criminal side, for sure. Uh, Mr. Smith, Mr. D. Smith, has a tremendous amount of experience. Um, and so him as the individual, I think, is the right pick. What I really like about this is that we have been working diligently from a commission perspective and standpoint on creating more collaboration between the county and many of the cities. And this is, this cooperative agreement is one of, another one of those steps showing that we're really working together to have better governing. So I am fully in support of bringing Mr. D. Smith over, and I will make a motion when you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion. We approve a MOU between Weaver County and Ogden City Corporation to carry out the purpose of Strike Force under Interlocal Cooper, Cooperation Act.
I second it. See no more discussion? Let's hear some? See no more discussion, let's throw some, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, we're gonna go on to public comment and just before we do, this has been a big week. Last week starting, and you may think the only thing that happened last week is we elected a new president, but we didn't. We did one more thing last week. We dedicated a road, the first road that Weber County has built with a roundabout. And I appreciate our opening prayer. He brought a lot of wisdom in there and I think we're gonna scratch the idea of putting a twenty-five foot statue of the three Commissioners in the middle of it.
He's just gonna put one Commissioner.
Done, there's gonna be no statue, no nothing. It's an awesome road. It connects Ogden and Weber County, that connection and has been needed for a long time, the final connection, Ogden City will put into the D Event Center. And it's amazing of the work that we did on that and what we've learned about building some roads. So it's a great road, there was more than we elected a new president last week, we dedicated a road, so remember that in your little journal, write that in there. So anyway, we're gonna go to public comment. Public comment. I'm seeing someone here that wants to comment really bad. Really? Well, thank you everyone, have a great week and we'll see you in another week.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
For those of you who are not being paid at the moment.